All roll.
Commissioner Rivera.
Here.
Vice Chair Contreras Leo.
Here.
Chair McLaughlin.
Here.
Commissioner Conno.
Here.
Commissioner Nguyen.
Here.
Chair, you have quorum.
Thank you. And for everybody that is here, we have only five planning commissioners, and one will have to leave at 7:00 PM this evening. So, we still have a quorum, but we will only have four. Okay. Could you stand for the pledge allegiance, please? Put your hand over your heart and begin. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you. Okay. I would like to cover some meeting protocols. First, I will outline the process for the public hearing, so that everybody knows what to expect. A, staff will provide an oral report and answer questions from the commission. B, the public hearing will be opened. The applicant will be given, will allow, will be allowed to give a presentation, limited to fifteen minutes. Members of the public will then be able to speak. Individuals will have three minutes. The applicant will be given an opportunity to respond to the comments made by the audience, limited five minutes. The public hearing will be closed. Discussion of the proposal will then return to the commission with formal action taken to approve, conditionally approve, deny, or continue review of the application. In addition, number two, secondly, please consider the following suggestions when organizing your comments. Please state your name and address. State whether you support or oppose or are neutral to the proposal. Your statement should be, should include all pertinent facts within your knowledge. Avoid gossip, emotion, and repetition. A clear, concise, non-repetitive argument is most effective. Designated speakers, a group of speakers may be designated to, for a single speaker to speak on their behalf. The speakers may yield their time to a designated speaker, up to a maximum of four. This should be arranged ahead of time with the secretary. Speakers, speaker cards for the speaker, and those donating their time to the speaker must be submitted altogether to the Planning Commission Secretary. So, I assume if you have done something like that, you would have done that already with the planning secretary. If you have not, please do so right now. Okay. Public comments. Does a member of the public have any public comments on non-agenda items? Please fill out a request to speak. At this point in time, I have no cards for this particular item. Does anybody would like to speak on a non-agenda item? Hearing none, we'll close the public comments, and we'll move on to the consent calendar. This is, this is the time for the commission to consider motions on the consent calendar. The first item we'd like to consider is the minutes from the previous meeting. Do we have a motion to approve the minutes?
Submove.
Second? Any comments? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Five-zero. Business calendar. We will now move to our regular business calendar. The formal action of the Planning Commission shall become effective after a ten-day appeal period unless the city council holds a public hearing on the matter. Then, the formal action will become effective on the day following the hearing and the decision by the city council. An appeal from the, from the decision or requirement of the Planning Commission must be filed with the clerk of the council and a copy sent to the Planning Department within ten days of the date of the commission action. The appeal may be made by any interested party, individual, or group. Our public hearing. Now is the time and place to consider item number one, conditional use permit 2019-01 and minor exception number 2019-01 for the project located at 4405 West Edinger Avenue. At this point in time, staff, Vince, at this point in time, are you recommending from a staff position that this be continued?
Yes, Mr. Chairman, that's correct. Date uncertain.
Date uncertain?
Correct.
Okay, 'cause we had this date, and then we had the next meeting. So, at this point in time, it's date uncertain for the next?
Correct. The applicant wants to do a really detailed parking analysis, and they need at least three to four weeks to get it done according to their consultant.
Okay. Do we have a motion to continue this item, date unknown?
Submove.
Ken, thank you. Do we have a second?
Second.
Okay. All those in favor?
Aye.
Five-zero. Thank you. This is the time and place to consider item number two, conditional use permit 2019-26, conditional use permit 2019-27, and conditional use permit number 2019-28 for the project located at 501 North French Street. A decision on this matter is final unless appealed within ten days by any interested party or group. If you wish to address the Planning Commission, please fill out a speaker card. Before we begin, do any of the commissioners have anything to disclose on this item?
Mr. Chairman, I have received an email from applicant regarding the project.
Okay.
I received an email as well.
Okay. Okay, and I, I had a conversation with one of the individuals that's involved with the project, but not directly. So, with that, choice.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, members of the commission. Before you this evening is an application for several conditional use permits, and I'll go through each one of those specifically. But, the applicant here is Noble Ale Works, and what is being proposed is a restaurant brewery for the location 501 North French Street. This is more or less a drawing of what the building is gonna look like. Obviously, it's, it doesn't look like that today, but tenant improvements are being proposed to do facade improvements and site improvements to the, to the site and the building, which is not under your purview today, but it's good to mention. So, a little bit of the site. It is located in the transit zoning code with the downtown subzone. It's one of the last properties that is located in that subzone there. And, as you can see, it's located at the center of the image, just north, so you can get an idea of where it's at. It's just north of the North Gate Market on Fourth Street. And, surrounding land uses are commercial and residential. To the west, we have a multi-apartment building complex, and then, you know, pretty much commercial parking lots structure just diagonally across on the intersection. The site itself is one point, .14 acres, and the building itself, the existing building footprint, is a little bit over 2,000 square feet. So, the idea for Noble, Noble Ale Works is to convert an existing 2,000, 24-square-foot office, a single-story building into a small restaurant brewery with some alterations that are also being proposed through tenant improvements. Part of those improvements are new outdoor dining areas located on the ground floor and a proposed roof deck. And, part of the improvements, to be able to access the roof deck, would be an installation of a new elevator. The CUP applications before you this evening are three, one of which is for alcohol sales, the other is for manufacturing, which is a requirement in the downtown subzone, and the other is after-hours operation. This is a site plan of the proposed improvements to the, and I wish I had a pointer. I can use the mouse here. So, this itself is the building where the brewery and kitchen, restaurant operation's gonna go, outdoor dining, and then the roof deck would be accessible through the stairway or an elevator here. Some of the improvements also include parking improvements and fencing, landscaping, that sort of thing. And these are proposed elevations. As you can see, the first one is on French Street, which you'll, you'll be looking at the west elevation. To the left of that will be the parking. And then, the other image is just looking north from the North Gate site. As I mentioned, this project has several CUP applications for alcohol sales in conjunction with the restaurant. The craft manufacturing, which is the brewery component, it's a small brewery, almost like a satellite operation from their other location in Anaheim. And, there's also a request to operate after hours until 1:00 AM on the weekends, which is Friday and Saturday, to be exact. The project itself meets all development standards. It also has certain conditions of approval that will help mitigate any potential impacts, noise, that sort of thing, for the adjacent residential uses. And it also will provide an added amenity because of the building and the site have been vacant for a little bit of time, so, a few months, I think, a year or so. This will definitely be an improvement for the site and the area, and provide additional uses for the residents and visitors. And with that, staff recommends the adoption of the resolution approving conditional use permits number 2019-26, 2019-27, and 2019-28 as condition. I'm available to answer any additional questions you may have, and that concludes staff's presentation.
Thank you, Ivan. Does anyone on the commission have a question of Ivan?
Chairman, I do have a question. I noticed that the, the site will have two, should be have two different ABC licenses, isn't it? One for selling beer and wine, and one for manufacturing brewery. Is that correct?
So, originally, just to give you a little background, it would have only been a brewery operation minus the restaurant, and that would have required a type 23. But now, with the restaurant component, the 41 allows for pretty much all the uses on-site. Similar to a BJ's Restaurant, they have a type 41. They can manufacture. Obviously, it's not in our downtown, but.
So, CUP, we have two licenses, 23 and 41?
No, it'd only be the 41 for the restaurant.
I see.
The manufacturing wouldn't require it. It's just the restaurant operation.
All right. Thank you.
So, it's beer and wine only?
Beer and wine, yes.
Okay. Any other questions? What's the, the after, the, the hours of operation for the patio and the deck area?
So, those staff conditioned the outdoor congregation areas, mind you, to basically seize at 9:00 PM, seven days a week. It's, it's still the downtown. It, you know, could be a little later, that sort of thing, but we took into consideration the residential uses to the, to the west and the, the projects that are in the pipeline for residential uses just to the south, that sort of thing. But, the after-hours operation until 1:00 will be only for indoor.
How, how's that handled from the standpoint of comparison with Benchmark? Because Benchmark's kind of an outdoor, indoor, it's got residential right around it.
Right.
My understanding is that they run from 11:00 in the morning till 11:00 at night.
Right. Benchmark, I actually pulled the file just to compare. They didn't have specific conditions limiting outdoor, obviously because it's an outdoor area, but their proposed hours of operation that are included in the staff report indicate that Sunday through Thursday, it ends, I believe, at 11:00 PM, and then Friday and Saturday till midnight for the, for the outdoor area.
For the, well, I mean.
Yeah, it's just all outdoor, yeah.
The restaurants, all outdoor.
Yeah. So, midnight latest, they didn't apply for a conditional use permit for after-hours. So, midnight would be the latest that they, they propose to remain open. And, at the same time, this is similar to that, but.
If it's similar, then why, why the change from, you know, nine to 11? I'm just curious as to what, what the motivation was, or what the reason and rationale was based on, you know, local and reasonably in the same area type operation?
Right. I think, well, there's a few facts that we have to take into consideration. It's the residential, the multifamily. Where the knife and glass or the Benchmark location is, you'll see a lot of single-family, a little more spread out, where at this location, we're gonna get a lot of multifamily with higher densities. And although there is, it's still considered the downtown, it's towards the outskirts of what the urban neighborhood subzones of the transit zoning code are, which kind of resemble only single-family, two-family property uses. So, we, we took that into consideration for it, but obviously, it's a condition that is.
So, the applicant's okay with nine to?
The, the applicant indicated that they wanted to increase the 9:00, 9:00 PM operations for the outdoor, but I, I didn't see them when we started the meeting, so I wasn't sure if Ryan Chase was gonna be here.
Okay.
Oh.
He's there?
Yeah, he's here.
Well, then, we'll wait.
Sorry. Probably walked in a little after. The applicant, the Noble Ale Works representative is here, so you can.
Okay. Go ahead. Sit here.
Keeping, this has sparked another interest since we're talking about times. And, and I don't know if this is the right time to bring it up, but how does that compare then when we're talking about a project like Hector's, where there's single homes right across the street, yet their hours are much longer and there's loud music? How, why is that different for this?
Madam Vice Chair, Marisco's Hector's is all indoor dining, so we can have longer hours 'cause all the impacts are within the closed building. We're just looking to limit the hours for the outdoor component, whereas the Benchmark is all outdoor seating. There's way, if you, if you limit hours nine o'clock, they have to shut down completely nine o'clock. With Noble Ale House, they still have some indoor options to keep the restaurant and brewery active until midnight, I believe 1:00 AM.
1:00 AM.
That's what they're gonna do with the inside component. So, the difference really is Marisco's Hector's all indoors.
And do other places stay open till 10:00 outdoors on the patio, or is it typically nine?
You know, I don't have that information. If we looked at other downtown areas, I assume that they open past. Yeah, places maybe like Noble Ale, or, I mean, Native Sun, sorry. Native Sun, they obviously have an outdoor dining area. I'm sure they stay open past 11:00 on the outdoors, but I'm not familiar with their hours.
Is the business itself imposing this on themselves? Are they saying this is what we'd like to do?
Well, the business obviously provided proposed hours of operation, but through conditions of approval that staff has established, those are the hours that are requiring that the outdoor area sees at a certain time. So, it's not the business owner, but you can, he's here. I'm sure he'd be able to provide more information on that.
Okay. Any other questions of staff? Thanks, Ivan.
Thank you.
Madam Secretary, have we received any written communication on this item?
We have, and those have been distributed and posted on our website.
Thank you. With that, the public hearing will now be open. Would the applicant like to speak?
Good evening, Mr. Chairman. Stephen Miles, I'm the founder, owner, operator of Noble Ale Works, and we are currently located in Anaheim, California. We were established in 2009, and we've been a production craft brewery for the last decade. And we're very excited to bring our concepts and our craft to the city of Santa Ana. We've, we've been looking at this property for quite some time, and we apologize for the delays in moving this along, but it's here now, and we're excited about it. And, if you have questions with respect to how we, how we look at the hours of operation, we're, we are, you know, we were a grassroots, small craft brewery in Anaheim. We're the first craft brewery in the city of Anaheim. We actually crafted their, their code as a result of our brewery, which was a conditional use permit entitlement. As a result of what we've done in the last ten years, we basically kind of have a uniform municipal code in Anaheim now, where a lot of these breweries do not even need a CUP. And I think that's, that's a reflection of how we do business. We, so when we look at this property and the unique facets of it, we really look at the hours of operation, and we consider ourselves a community brewery. So, we, we're really striving to get hours that will make sense for what we're doing. Doesn't really have a lot to do with, you know, are we gonna be loud, or have these extended, like, loud times of alcohol consumption. It's really not that at all. It's really about when people get off work, what are they doing on their transit, how do we fit into that concept? So, when we look at 9:00 PM in a kind of a civic area, it doesn't really make a whole lot of sense. It would be better to have some extra hours beyond that. So, that's how we're looking at it. And then, in terms of the weekend, again, there's, there's plenty of examples of good, like brew pubs or draft houses in downtown. So, we think 1:00 AM is a pretty reasonable time. We have 2:00 AM in Anaheim. We don't use it. I mean, it's really a matter of just accommodating your guests. But, yeah, we've had no issues in ten years in Anaheim, and we do have pretty vibrant patrons before sporting events. We're walking distance to the, to the Angels Stadium and the pond. But, through that tenure, we've, we've never had any issues with, with groups or rowdy behavior. So, we think, again, when we're asking for hours of operation, we're really looking at it as being a functional part of the community. And, one of the things that I, I'm struggling with a little bit, and just to be very honest, is that if we have this distinction between outside and inside, there's really that, just, how do we do that? How do we, if we have people outside in kind of a, kind of a patio setting, and then at the awakening hour, we have to get everybody inside, or we have to excuse guests. So, that's something that, I mean, we're okay with, with the concept. It's just how do you practically implement that? So, that's just, I'm just being very honest about that. I don't wanna have an issue down the road where we're, you know, struggling to get people in and out. But, I don't think it's gonna be a problem. I think we're really looking to have a lot of mitigating components to the, to the parking area or the patio area, and I think we can make that work, so.
Any other comments that you?
At your leisure.
Does any of the commissioners have a question of the applicant? No? No? Okay. Thank you, Steve.
Thank you.
Okay. I do not have any cards on this item. Is any, would anybody like to speak on this item at this point in time? Hearing none. The public hearing is closed. We'll bring it back to the council of the commission. Does the commissioners have any comments on this item at this point in time? Would anybody like to make a motion?
Anyone like to make a motion to let the conditional use permit 2019-26, 2019-27, 2019-28?
Second.
Second? Okay. Any other discussion? All in favor, say aye. That's good. Sorry, Felix.
So, the hours is gonna be 9:00 PM, the outdoor patio, and then 1:00 AM inside? Is that what?
Weekdays.
Under those conditions, correct? I'm trying to find the conditions. I'm not seeing where.
2-28.
'Cause I, I mean, I agree, kind of like closing it at nine, especially the outdoor patio. I, I think allowing the same time as Benchmark isn't a bad idea. Maybe with the conditions of down the line, have an idea of whether or not, I guess down the line, see if there is an issue, and then scale it back rather than stopping it at 9:00 PM from the get-go.
Okay. So, Vince, what, let me ask you a question from a process point of view. If we decide to go one way or another, if we decide to go to 11:00 and scale it back to nine because there's problems or issues with the, with the location, if there's no problems and issues with it, and we wanted to scale it from nine to 11:00, what's the process in that respect?
I would recommend, Mr. Chairman, that we amend condition number four of CUP 19-28, which limits it to nine o'clock. You can change it to, say, 11:00 o'clock. And then, why don't we throw on there like a six-month review? Let her study the site and see what we come up with. If it's an issue, we come back to Planning Commission. If it's not an issue, you don't hear about it. You go and enjoy the facility, and they operate the way they wanna operate.
All right.
I would support you that.
So, you support the?
I would support that, because it's very inconvenient for the operator to move the customer from the outdoor into indoor at 9:00 PM. And, you know, I would have supported that.
Okay. So. Yes.
Commissioner Conno, do you accept the friendly amendment? You were the motion, the original motion?
Yeah.
Okay. Can we now state, how is that amendment gonna read?
I have that condition number four, for, on 2-28 will be, outdoor hours will be extended to 11:00 PM with a six-month review.
Okay. All right. Okay, with that, we have, we have a first and a second, and the friendly amendment. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Unanimous five-zero. Thank you. Next item. This is the time and place to consider item number three, conditional use permit number 2019-18 for the project located at 9235 North Santiago Street, Unit C. Please note, the decision on this matter is final unless appealed within ten days by any interested individual or group. If you wish to address the, if you wish to just address the commission at this point in time, please fill out a card. Before we begin, are there any disclosures on the part of the commissioners?
Mr. Chairman, I have spoke with the applicant regarding the project.
Okay. Anybody else?
I spoke with the applicant and took a tour around the, the facility.
Okay. And I spoke to Barry Carlo on the 21st of August about this particular item, so.
Also visited the site and spoke to the applicant.
Okay. And you didn't do anything? Where were you?
No communication.
All right. Boy, left out about, left out of that deal.
That's fine.
Okay. Jerry, go ahead, please.
Good evening, Chairman, members of the Planning Commission. I stated this is an application on conditional use permit number 2019-18 for a laundromat proposed at 923 North Santiago Street, Unit C. The applicant's requesting approval of CUP number 2019-18 to allow the conversion of an existing communal laundry room to be converted into a commercial laundromat. Per the city's code, laundromats citywide do require conditional use permit, hence why this application is before you tonight. This is an aerial image of the surrounding vicinity. The subject site is located at the northeast corner of Santiago Street and Santa Ana Boulevard, and the subject units highlighted in green there for you. It is right adjacent to the transit center, the Santa Ana Transit Center, and you do have some single-family residential units to the east of the subject property. The tenants, the tenant itself, it's located within the mixed-use development project known as the depot that was entitled back in 2016 and completed construction at early 2018. Consists of approximately 70 affordable units and 9,300 square feet of commercial space with 188 parking spaces, which are available subterranean with 31 parking spaces at surface level. This next slide just indicates the existing floor plan of the laundry room. As mentioned, they're just going from an existing laundry room to a commercial laundromat. As built currently, does contain approximately 36 washers and 28 dryers. There's also currently contained, storage area for the cards, some bench seating, soap machines, and televisions. As part of the conditional use permit process, staff is recommending that the applicant do some minor interior improvements to incorporate a communal lounge area, as well as to provide some Wi-Fi to its customers. The hours of operation will be from 7:00 AM to 10:00 PM for non-residents. The applicant's currently developing a strategy to allow some, some hours strictly devoted to its residence, to allow for that flexibility, and a full-time attendant will be present at all times during the hours of operation. This is just a site image of the currently built-out of the laundry room, so the main access for the laundry room would be off of Santiago Avenue, or Santiago Avenue. And there's also a secondary access off a corridor, which is accessible through the inside, and access off of the parking lot. With that, staff is recommending approval of the project as it will provide a needed service to the general public area. There are some conditions of approval that are being recommended by staff in order to mitigate any unforeseen impacts. Some of those conditions do require, for example, a full-time attendant, installation of some signage such as no loitering, as well as quiet zone signage, and a property maintenance agreement is required to be recorded in order to maintain the premises clean at all times. With that, the laundromat does comply with all the San Antonio Municipal Code regulations, as well as building code requirements. And staff is recommending approval of the CUP number 2019-18 as conditioned. That concludes my presentation. I'll be here to answer any of your questions, and the owner-operator is also here to answer any operational questions you may have.
Thank you, Jerry. Does the commission have any questions of Jerry?
The chairman, I do.
Okay. Yes, Ken?
Condition number 14, the owner-operator shall provide Wi-Fi within the access to his customer. How that to, to be provided? Because I'm not quite understanding that condition. If the provision of Wi-Fi in that asset may be reconsidered if the planning staff and owner determine provision of Wi-Fi in the assets result in loitering at the property. Could you explain that condition?
Some most newer laundromats are now incorporating Wi-Fi or other type of entertainment to pretty much entertain their customers that are waiting to do laundry, for which is why we added it. as a condition. The additional language that was added there was just added in case it becomes a nuisance. So we don't want people to just be gathering there and using Wi-Fi and not actually leaving the site after they're done with their loads. So the owner will be providing some type of code, passwords for the customers, and they can set it up with like a time limit, not exceed a certain time. So again, the additional language there was just added just to make sure if it does become a nuisance, we do have the ability to eliminate that.
So you said that there were special hours for the residents, but I see that it says hours for non-residents are restricted to seven AM to ten PM. That's like all day.
That's correct. So seven AM to ten PM is pretty much a citywide standard for all laundromats. The residents did express some concerns that they were not going to have ability to do their washing and drying if it's open to the general public. So the owner will be working with the residents to find out hours that are going to be strictly devoted to the residents.
Well, I mean, I believe that's fair. I mean, when you purchase or you rent there, you're thinking you have access to your private laundry room, and now all of a sudden it becomes public. I wouldn't be comfortable not knowing what those hours would be for residents. Whether it's weekends that are solely for residents, I don't know, but I just feel like the conditions are not complete by not including the residents. So that's my comment about the hours.
Maybe that's something we'll address with the applicant?
Yes.
Okay. Any other questions of Jerry? Thanks, Jerry. Okay. Madam Secretary, have we received any written communication on this item?
We did, and those were distributed and posted on our website.
Okay. All right. Now is the time that the public hearing is open. Does the applicant want to speak at this point in time?
My name is Barry Cottle with the depot at Santiago. We're the original developers. If you recall, we were here about three to three and a half years ago before this body to get approval for the entire community. The laundromat is part of our retail space. It's on the ground floor. You can see it's right adjacent to the parking, which we feel very comfortable with. And altogether, there's about sixty-two machines in the laundromat. If this was an apartment building for this number of units, there'd be approximately seven washers and seven dryers, or a total of about fourteen machines. We have sixty-two machines. They're all commercial, higher-upgraded machines, and some of those go up to fifty and sixty-pound machines, which means you can do five to six loads at one time. And we also have more heavy-duty, larger dryers also. So it makes folks that have a big load, have children, have a larger family, can come and go in a much quicker time period, is what it is. The, two things, and to answer your question also, Mr. Contreras, of course, is that we've been in there a lot. We've looked at our cameras that are inside the laundry, you know, since we started this application process to have the CUP for the retail space. You know, the laundromat is never completely full. I've been there in the last two weeks at nine in the morning, three o'clock, four o'clock, seven o'clock, and eight-thirty at night. The most we've had in there at one time is five people. Now, they use multi-machines, but there's still a lot of machines. I've actually gone to them and asked how many machines they're using. So if they're completely upgraded, they get a lot more work. The hours we're thinking about is opening earlier and then staying open later. We've had people that said they like to do it before they go to work, or they get home from work, they cook dinner for their family, the husband and wife. And we do have a lot of husbands also that are using the equipment, then come when they're in bed and use the equipment. So what we're going to do is put a keypad on the doors, then the laundromat would be closed in those other hours for the neighborhood, is what it is, and be open with a keypad system for the residents, is what they would have, so they could come in and out. There's also a door kind of in the back that comes off of more of the residential area. So that's what we'd be doing for those times, what we'd be doing for the residents themselves. If there's other questions, I'd be glad to answer them. The staff did a good job. Thank you very much. I don't want to repeat what they said, but I'm glad to answer any questions you may have.
Cynthia?
So you're saying then for residents who live there, potentially can only do laundry without others coming in that don't live there before seven and after ten?
They could do that, or we could adjust that seven to ten time, and are thinking with perhaps like nine to nine. That would give us two or three hours in the morning, then a couple hours later on in the afternoon, or in the evening also, is what it could be. But to work within those hours.
I just find that a little unrealistic, that families are going to get all their laundry done just during the week. What about the weekends?
The weekends were open from that seven to ten. We're thinking those same approximate hours, but it's not that they have to do their laundry during those hours. It's still open to the residents on all those hours. And the laundromat's not full, and especially with the type of equipment, so they can use it anytime they want.
And I understand that. I understand they'll have access to it, but I just think when you go and you rent somewhere and you see the amenities that you're getting, and then you see strangers coming in to use your amenities now, that perhaps they might still want to feel some type of community in doing that. So is there any consideration maybe on the weekend, Saturday at least, like seven to noon, where it's just residents? I mean, I don't know, it's like someone coming into your home all of a sudden, having access to it. It just doesn't have that flow, and I don't know if the residents are being put first before the non-residents in doing that. That's part of their living space.
Correct.
So those are my concerns.
I appreciate that. We're not setting concrete on that. We did have a resident meeting. We had about thirty-two, forty folks that came to that resident meeting, which was a good open, and told them we'd work with them on that timing and schedule was going to work for them also. We do put our residents first, is what we do. We've been in Santa Ana doing affordable housing now for just about twenty-six years. We still own our very first affordable community on Santa Ana Boulevard that we built twenty-six years ago, or rehabbed that particular property. So our residents are very important to us. You know, when we get them as residents, they get us as a landlord, and you get us as an affordable developer. We like the kid, but you get us for life. You know, we've kind of proven that over the last twenty-six years. So we want to do and do work with them on that timing, is what we want to do. And what works best for them are the majority of them, is what it is.
And I respect all of that, but in being that you put the residents first, the residents aren't included in the conditions. It's the non-residents, the hours for the non-residents. So there's nothing that shows me that residents have some type of, that some of the time we've been talking about where it's just for residents.
Mm-hmm.
Thank you for answering my question.
Good. Thank you.
Any other questions? Ken?
Mr. Cottle, how do you feel about this? See, it require you to provide Wi-Fi access to customers? Is that could be part of the normal services of the laundromat, to provide Wi-Fi access to the customer? And my next question is how that it will be implemented?
So the Wi-Fi, to answer this, second question first. We can implement it through the property. Our leasing office is right next door. So we have the services, and our technology can, you know, our IT department can provide the Wi-Fi. We have other laundromats. We have another apartment laundromat, which is an eighty-four unit community that has a laundromat in the retail space just like this. It's the only laundromat that the residents have, and it's open the entire time to both, and it's worked out for about the last five years. And we do not have Wi-Fi at that particular location. So we've not had the Wi-Fi before. We agreed to it in case people started dislording there and trying to use only the Wi-Fi, then we have that condition, is what it is. So, Mr. Win, we're glad to provide that to start with and just work with staff if it's a problem at all. It's not a problem to do.
Barry, when you met with the neighbors, the people that are in the building, living in the apartments, you know, Cynthia brings up a good point.
Mm-hmm.
You know, you've opened up this laundromat to the surrounding neighborhood.
Correct.
And they have just as much access to it as to the people that live in your facility.
Mm-hmm. Yes, sir.
Kind of look at it as it's an opportunity to you, because it improves the business model from that standpoint. But is there any way, I kind of fall on what Cynthia was saying earlier, is there any way that we, you know, that the tenants that are there, the people that are residing in that facility would have a specific time that would be available to them? But I think they're also concerned about their safety in some respect, maybe with people coming from the outside versus people that are inside the facility itself.
And we understand that. Can I throw out a couple hours and see if they may work or some times? Is that good to do? So I think we're looking at Monday and Friday, then we're looking at Saturday and Sunday, when a lot of people do their laundry. So we were looking from being open from seven to ten to everyone, and being open a little bit longer for the residents. What if, and I think you threw out, Cynthia, if it's, maybe we do something like that is restricted to residents at nine. So people are taking their children to school, they're walking their children, they still have time to do that laundry, is what it is. So if we open to the general public at nine, so then the residents had up till nine to do their laundry, and we were open at ten, and maybe we made that to like eight or nine, is what it is. So then they have a couple hours in the evening, after we talked about, the children, you know, go to bed, they have their dinner, that type of thing. And then Saturday, thinking we go nine to six instead of that seven to ten, so they have that same time in the morning and like four hours in the evening on that Saturday and Sunday. So Saturday and Sunday being nine to six, and then the daytime being that nine to eight, is a possibility.
Cynthia?
You know, I have an issue without the residents being able to have a say, because when they went there to live, they decided to live there because of the quality of life that was being offered to them.
Mm-hmm.
And now it's changing. So the access, I can tell you, when I would want to do laundry, as a mom, mother of four, I'd probably be doing it on a Saturday between eight and noon, because I'm not going to hit up at seven to go do my laundry when I have to make breakfast. So just being conscientious that a lot of folks that drop off their kids also go to work. So I don't know, if you're telling us that you go in there at those early hours and it's empty, then why would you offer that to the residents? Because then that means they're not doing their laundry at those hours, because it's empty. When did you find it to be busy? Were you there when you saw your residents using it?
Yeah, I see the residents. When I've been in there, I've asked people where they're from and where they're coming from. And I would say half the people, when I was in those times, I told you, are residents, and half are probably from the neighborhood walking over, is what they're doing.
So they're already using it?
Right.
The non-residents?
Some of them, yes. About half and half, correct.
How are they, so there's no security measure on the door for just residents? It's already, anybody can walk in and do laundry?
Not at this time, there's not, no. That would be added, is what it would be done.
Okay, so that's why I was asking. What are the hours that you found your residents doing most of their laundry? You saw when they weren't doing it. What were the hours that you did see them doing it?
The hours when I went in, that was times I mentioned, that nine in the morning, the three and four, and that seven and eight-thirty is what it was.
Did you go on a weekend?
Been there on Saturday, yes. Just about the same, maybe a little bit busier, but not much busier.
I'd like to hear from my colleagues in regards to the proposed hours, if that's reasonable for residents, or if it should be a little more prolonged at least on a Saturday morning.
Well, let's do this. At this point in time, let's continue and finish the public hearing.
Can I ask you a question? On the Saturday, so you were thinking, and you used a good example of being a mother of four, and using that Saturday morning, and throughout like that, maybe like that noon or twelve o'clock, to ten o'clock, open for neighbors, but it's open all morning then for residents, you're throwing out, perhaps?
Pretty much. Because that still gives a huge chunk of the day for any non-resident to come in.
To come in, right.
Noon to nine, ten, I don't know what time you're closing it. That's a huge window for a non-resident.
Right. So it'd be for that, so the residents would have that, let's say that, seven to twelve. So if they're not getting up early in the morning, they still.
At least they know, and they have that option.
Right.
They know that you were considering thoughtful enough to think of them as a community, and at least they know if they want to plan, that they can go in there calmly, not worry about people they don't recognize.
Anyone else, right.
In there with their kids, if they take them with them, they know that on Saturdays, eight to twelve, they can go do laundry. Then that's their choice.
That would be, yeah.
At least they have that kind of safety feel or a community.
We understand what you're saying, and that would be fine with us to do that. That would not be a problem. And again, that'll be a keypad situation, for them to have that keypad. They can just come and go, is what they can do. But that Saturday would be fine from that noon to ten.
Otherwise, the rest is fine.
Exclusive from that. Or if they wanted even, the laundromat's hours are seven to ten, we talked about, but if they wanted to go in early, it's nice the laundromat doesn't back up or touch or join any residential apartments. Where they touch residential apartments, we usually limit the hours more, but this, they don't, so we can actually have the hours longer. If they wanted to go in earlier or later, they can do that also. But that would be fine on that twelve to ten on a Saturday.
Fine with everything else, as long as the residents have a timeframe that they know they can rely on, is good for them.
I think those are good hours, so I appreciate that.
Can we define right now the residents' hours?
So I was looking at the resident hours, what we're talking about, on that Monday through Friday then. The laundromat, instead of being from seven to ten, it would be from nine to eight. And the residents would have it in the morning up to nine, and then they would have it after eight o'clock, is what they would have. That'd be Monday through Friday.
Okay.
And then on the Saturday, it would be open to the public from noon to ten, then open to residents from any time in the morning they wanted to go till noon, and have all those hours in the morning. And then Sunday, really leaving the same as we have it now, then, what it would be. So that would be that, again, that would be that nine to eight for outside. They could come earlier, come later, either one. Still come in the daytime, but have it privately in those other hours.
So Sunday through, let's say, Sunday through Friday, you're talking about the nine to eight?
For non-residents.
Better way to put it, yes. Uh-huh. Yes. And Saturday would be the noon, is what it would be.
Okay. All right. Thank you, Barry.
Thank you.
Does any other question? Anybody else have a question, Barry?
I was quick with a question.
Go ahead.
Instead of providing the Wi-Fi for that space, I'm sorry.
We got, received some emails that there was some retail space available, so maybe see as an option that other person can provide that Wi-Fi and that lounge space for people that are in the surrounding area. Has there been like a plan for, to provide retail space to anyone else?
We have a tenant that is not quite there yet. They're a local Santa Ana tenant, been here for years and years, thus looking to take the entire rest of the retail space. And hopefully, we can announce that in about two or three months, is what we're looking at. We've done tenant improvement drawings, they've looked at it, they're doing their financial work and things right now, and they take the rest of the space, is what it is. And they're open in the community. It's a space you'll all recognize, the name of that tenant, and hopefully in about two or three months, we'll be able to announce that, so.
Okay. Thank you, Barry.
Thank you very much. Thank you.
By the way, you're the only card on this, so we're going to assume that you're done. And at this point in time, if no one else has any, wants to say anything in the public hearing, we'll consider the public hearing closed. We'll bring it back to the commission for discussion. Does anybody have a discussion or motion they would like to make at this point in time on item number three?
I'd like to make a motion to approve conditional use permit number two thousand nineteen dash eighteen to establish a commercial laundromat facility, the property located at nine two three North Santiago Street, Unit C, with the new proposed hours.
A second.
We got a second? Okay. Madam Secretary, you have the hours, so you're good?
I'm good.
All right, so we don't have to repeat that, because we'll confuse ourselves. Does anybody else have a comment at this point in time?
No.
Okay, hearing no more comments. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes five-zero.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, Barry. This is the time and place to consider item number four, site plan review number two zero one nine dash zero one, and density bonus agreement number two zero one nine dash zero one for the project located at one one four East Fifth Street and one one seven East Fifth Street. Please note that the decision on this matter is final unless appealed within ten days by any interested individual or group. If you wish to address the planning commission, please fill out a card. Before we begin, do any of the commissioners have anything to disclose at this point in time on this item? Felix?
I met with the applicant and also some of the preserve, the historic.
Okay.
Mr. Chairman, I received the communication, the applicant spam, and also received the video presentation, which will be presented tonight.
Okay. Cynthia?
I met with Pam Cepeda and the applicant as well for presentation.
I also met with Ms. Pam Cepeda and the applicant.
Okay, and I met with Pam Cepeda and Mike McCann last Friday, and we've, I've also had discussions with Preserve Orange County. Having said that-
Chair.
Turn it over to you, Vince, yes?
Chair, I'm sorry, I just want to clarify your statement, and it was my bad, but on your disclosure about the action, the site plan review is final, and the density bonus agreement will be forwarded to city council for final determination. Just wanted to clear that up.
Okay.
I'm pinching for Ally today, who's on an extended vacation. So, what we have before you today is the First American Title Company mixed use project on the corner of Main, Fourth, Fifth, and Bush. So, here's an overview of the project site here. You can see it consists of two lots. Here is, where is the cursor? There we go. This is the first site right here, Site A, and then a Site B right here across the street on North Side of Fifth Street. So, it's two different parcels, it's in our transit zoning code, within our downtown sub-district, and it's surrounded, as you know, by downtown there, by a combination of commercial, some parking structures, parking lots, and office uses, so a variety of uses typically found in the downtown areas. Here's a rendering of the building before you hear. The building there in Site A, on the one on Fourth and Fifth and Main, is a seven-story structure, mixed use, it's going to be a commercial on the ground floor, about twelve thousand, a little over twelve thousand square feet. It's going to have a commercial on Fourth Street, going to link that Fourth Street frontage there, and commercial as well. If you're familiar with the site, you know, right now, there's a big brick block wall around it, kind of turns its back to the site. This project's going to open up that whole corner there and reintroduce itself back to the downtown area there. Another rendering of the project site, again, seven-story structure on Site A, the one to the north side is a four-story structure, total of 220 units will be on both project sites. Here's the four-story of the smaller five there on Site B, total of 220 residential units, of which 11 will be affordable, five percent affordable housing for the project. Project description, as I just mentioned here, 220 units total, 196 on the south side, 24 on the smaller side, affordable units with the remainder market rate units, over 12,000 square feet of commercial, and then you've got a wide variety of amenities, most of them on the Site A, the main building site. You've got a plaza, which you saw there in the rendering, go back real quickly and show you the plaza right here, right there on Fourth and Bush will be that open plaza. You've got a roof deck on that seven-story building, which will have typical roof amenities on top, with some lounging areas up there on top, dog run, be very dog-friendly place, then enhanced landscaping. Then the project to the north level, smaller, about a 1,500 square foot amenity deck, or amenity area within the building, is a much smaller project. 332 parking spaces, I'll get into that in a moment here, it's 1.5 per unit. They're asking for a density bonus agreement, they're providing affordable units on site, so they get the ability to ask for a concession, or essentially a waiver, and the one they're asking for is parking. So, before you tonight, you have a couple of applications, you get the site plan review, which is to determine that the project is consistent with the transit zoning code. Then the second one is the density bonus agreement, which, again, as Sarah mentioned, will go forward to council. And what they're looking for is a 1.5 spaces per unit. The D, the density bonus, DPA, will be considered by the city council, it's a city council and a CDA document, that'll go forward here at a future date to the city council. So, in taking a look at the project here, we analyze it and compare it to what the transit zoning code says and its compliance with the standards, and this project meets the goals and objectives of the transit zoning code, as well as the housing opportunity ordinance. It's a mixed-use development, got commercial on the ground floor, again, activating Main Street and Fourth Street, creating a plaza there to kind of link in with the downtown area. It maximizes the project's transit. You've got the streetcar line going right down Fourth Street, so this project will be right there at the front door of the OC Streetcar, when it opens up in about two and a half years. You've got a bike lane that's going to be put in there for a lot of that multimodal mixed-use type of transit, and then you've got high-capacity bus lanes running along Main Street. So, all those different features and factors here kind of help justify why there's a parking reduction for the project there, combination of the streetcar, bike lanes, and then transit there. Architecture's been designed to be, to complement the downtown. The project doesn't mimic downtown, what you want to do is have a project that doesn't try to mimic or try to be a fake facade, a match of downtown buildings, you want something a little bit different, so you know that it wasn't part of the original fabric of the downtown. This project complies with that there by its design, then it's got a bunch of highly amenitized, as I mentioned, the different amenities here that you'll find in a common high upscale type of residential project or hotel, you'll find in this project as well. And then additional element in this project is, they're not required to comply with the housing opportunity ordinance, because the project complies with the, with the densities and the zoning for the, for the transit zoning code, but they are going and putting in these 11 units, integrating them into the project site, which is something we don't really see in these types of projects. Most of the developers are actually paying a fee, writing a check and having it, the residential units be on down the road. Again, as I mentioned earlier, it complies with the densities there within the house up, within the transit zoning code, densities and floor ratios, complying with all the standards except for the parking. Again, 11 units on site, which makes them eligible for the concessions, as I mentioned earlier, and they, obviously, they've selected the parking incentive to get the reduction from the project site. So, we know there's been some issues about parking throughout the city here in the past, several projects you've seen. So, one thing they've proactively done is putting together a parking study and a parking management plan, and what that basically says is that they've got 1.5 right now, but they can go higher, combination of resources. They can do some valet parking on site to accommodate another 80 spaces, plus there's also city parking structure right across the street. This project's ideal for doing a shared kind of parking with the city, because people come home at night when the parking structure's empty out. So, rather than spending a thirty, thirty-five, forty thousand dollars per space for our structured parking, they can utilize some existing parking facilities within the downtown, and again, we have a parking structure right there across the street at Fifth and Main. So, that's another option, is if we want to get that parking number up, enter into agreement with them to lease some of the city's parking spaces there. So, with those two measures, with the combination of the valet and the off-site parking through the city's parking structure, you can get higher than the, just 2.2 about, which is, and again, the downtown transit zoning code requires 2.15, which is two per unit, plus a .15 for guest parking. So, with those two measures, we can meet that parking requirement. We have a sequel document before you this afternoon, this evening, and what it is, is an addendum to the EIR. Did the EIR back for the transit zoning code in 2010, and whenever you make some changes to the, to the projects there that wasn't studied back in 2010, you have to go back and do another environmental document, and for this case, we were able to do an addendum. And then, because we did some zoning code changes several months ago, we had to go back and do this addendum document to basically justify how this new project is consistent and will not create any new impacts within the downtown area. To create new impacts, you can't do an addendum, but if you can, if it's less impacts, then you can do an addendum, and that's what happened here today, is that we have an addendum before you. So, basically, we studied the impacts of this project compared to what was approved in 2010, there's no impacts or lesser impacts with this project, therefore, the addendum is applicable document. Back in 2010, there's a mitigation monitoring program was approved for the, for the transit zoning code, that's still applicable, and the mitigation measures will have to be complied, complied with for this project as well. And then right there, again, you can see there, when we took a look at transit zoning code, it studied 4,000 units in downtown, and almost 400,000 square feet of commercial, so this project is way below that number, so it was less insignificant overall when you reviewed. So, again, we reviewed the proposed project, what was approved in 2010, lesser impacts, technical studies came back and said, we didn't, we didn't create any new impacts, therefore, the addendum is a document that is viable for this project, and that's before you, is one of the recommendations, to approve the addendum to the EIR. A couple other side elements here, we did an economic study and fiscal study as well for this project, and basically, it's going to generate 900 temporary jobs or permanent jobs throughout this new construction, this new project, and the permanent project, then generated approximately 12.8 million dollars over 25 years for the city's general fund. So, it will be, in addition to a positive development downtown, it'll be also a financial generator for the city as well. Community outreach, there's some, quite a bit of community outreach for this project, started back a little, what, June, a little over a year ago, we had a sunshine meeting for the project there back in June, and some people that came in and spoke, about 17 showed up, and there was a bunch of different questions that were asked there, mainly about affordable, housing affordability, project impacts, traffic, typical parking type of things, elements you expect to see in these meetings. There've been other meetings between that June and this month here, seven different interest groups that were met, and some of those are downtown business owners, Santa Ana Business, Inc., Downtown, Inc., and the local preservation groups, and so we've met with all those different groups in the past, what, 14 months. And with that, the recommendation before you tonight is to approve and adopt the addendum, that's within your packet, as well as approve the site plan review 19-1 as a condition, and also that you recommend that the city council approve the density bonus agreement for this project as well. That concludes my presentation. I'm here to answer any questions you have. I've got the consultants, environmental consultants, historic consultants are here, and I believe the traffic consultant is here as well to answer any questions, traffic and parking.
Okay, thank you Vince. Does the commission have any questions? Cynthia?
Under community outreach, I've seen letters of support from all of the groups above local, other than local historic preservation reps. Were there any issues that came out of that meeting from these local representatives in historic preservation? Because I want this to-
You have several letters before you that came back, and essentially, it's talking about the preservation of the building there right now. That building right there was built back in the 20s or 30s, our records are kind of unclear, but it's definitely 100 years old or older. Back in 75, we issued permits to wrap the building and put the building in facades, as you see today. So, by doing that, we essentially removed the building as an eligible historic resource, and now it's just another building in downtown. So, the historic preservation comments that you see that have come about is basically, is there a way to dig down, scrape down a little deeper, take a look what's there and try to preserve, and maybe even integrate that project into the building? So, that's the significant comments we've heard lately from that project.
So, I'm trying to understand, if in 1931, you were saying that was the original?
I go back as far as 1920, it says-
So, each time that building was renovated, it had to get approved, correct?
Yes.
And each time it was approved, was there issues that arose from that in regards to something being historical, or anything that anyone felt needed to be preserved? Was there anything found during those excavations, or when they did build, or did anything come up?
Our historic movement came in, in the late 90s, in the 90s there, as far as our chapter 30 in our preservation code, that building, or the downtown was listed as a national historic district in 83. This building was reskinned in 77, so there really wasn't a historic preservation moving back at that time, because the building was only 50 years old, it wasn't as old as it is now, so it was an issue back then. Back in 1983, when we did the national district, the site, these buildings were exempted, not part of it, because it'd been redone, it lost its historic integrity by putting a whole new skin around it.
So, what the city did in this process, can you explain to me what the city did for this report? Who was it that was sent out there?
We had, and I can bring her up, her architect historian, they come out and then study the site.
Okay.
So, it'd be actually the third time we've done it. The first time was back in the 80s, when we had the National Register, the site was studied, it wasn't significant, because it'd been reskinned. In 2010, we did an environmental EIR for the project, hold transit zoning code, did a cultural historic survey, and again, it was not eligible, because it was, it lost its integrity. And here we are again, for a third time, it's still not a historic building, because historic is really what you see. What you see is more of a modern building, you don't see that original building underneath it, so it's hard, you can't list it as historic if you can't see it, so.
Is there any other way to figure out if there's anything historical there?
We'd probably have to get a demo permit to kind of peel away at the, at the top layer and see what's below it, and see what's out there. We went back to, earlier today, and tried to look at some plans, we have some plans on file, but they're not quite clear what the original building is down below, so.
Thank you, Vince.
Any other questions from the commission? Angie?
Vince, in the project for the seven-floor project, what percentage are one-bed, two-bed, and three-bed? I couldn't find it.
Let me see if I have it real quickly.
Twenty studios.
Twenty?
Twenty percent studios.
Oh, okay, 20%, so 20% of 220 is-
Forty-five.
Forty-five, okay, so 45 studios.
Forty-six percent are ones, a total of 101.
101, one-bedroom units?
One bed.
Thirty-four percent are two-bedrooms, 74 units total.
And 74, two-bedroom units.
And then I saw three beds in here, is that correct? No, no, three beds, okay. Thank you. And, oh, and then for the parking, how, what percentage of the parking would not be valet or provided by the city parking? How much would they be bringing in themselves?
Right now, it's 332, I believe was the exact number here, one second.
Yeah, 332.
Yeah, 332 is the number of spaces they're proposing, which is 1.51 per unit.
332, and then total with, 80 with valet and city?
Another 70, 70, it could be more than 70, but 70 would get them to the 2.15, which is what the transit zoning code requires for a residential project.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions of staff at this point in time? No? Okay, I'm going to ask one Vince, and that is, just from a standpoint of process, you know, usually, a project of this nature, given its size and complexity, we usually end up having a workshop for this particular project in advance of bringing it to the commission so that there's, a lot of things are worked through, and we understand some of the details, and we don't have to go through it at the, at the point of the commission, which we're doing tonight. Did we have a workshop on this in the past?
No, Mr. Chairman, we did not.
Yeah, okay, and that, that's a concern of mine, because, I mean, I think that, you know, this, this is a very complex project, and I think that there's some decisions that have been made on, on certain directions we're taking, and one, for instance, the, we, we as a commission approved the parking plan to basically help this project, along with other projects downtown, from the standpoint of one, one-time parking, but there's really no plan or strategy behind that, so it's something that leaves me a little bit confused and concerned in that respect. So, I just wanted to put that out on the table. Any other questions of Vince at this point in time?
Thank you. Oh.
Cynthia?
And maybe this is something, I know it was discussed when I met with the developers, but I don't see it here tonight, and I don't know if I'm jumping the gun, if there's going to be a presentation, but I still don't see on paper what or where the amenities are going to be. I, usually, this is the first time we have a project of this nature come in, and we don't see where the pool's going to be, or the clubhouse, or the, even the dog run, I mean, we don't have any visuals of that.
You'd have to parse together, they're on a combination of the floor plans, you can see them, and also on the, the cross-sections, you can see like the pool on the third floor of the, of the taller building there, and then go through the floor plans, you can see different amenity spaces, we called out.
Because even in the, the listings where it talks about what they need to provide, it says that staff will look at those amenities before finalizing it.
Yeah.
So, are you still, are they still being looked at? Are they final?
They'll still be looked at. This is a little bit different, because normally, you see projects that are, have open space, we'll just take the one in freshman mind, 2525, that one, you have a layup, you have open space areas, pockets, you have courtyards, and you have roof decks, and so that one, they provide a landscape plan for. This building's 95% covering entire site, so it's a little bit different, you don't have that land, colored landscape plan to help you see those amenities that are going to be provided on there.
Now, so that's one issue that I have, just the same as other, I like to see things packaged before I say, okay, yeah, this is, I think, a good final project. The other one is, I read in the conditions that I believe the developer has agreed to have someone of historical nature during excavation? Is that correct?
Yeah, condition 10, I believe, on page four dash 31.
Yes, it's number 10.
Yes.
It says that, does that, do you know if that has sufficed the historical preservation It says that, does that, do you know if that has sufficed the historical preservation? That, I mean, that to me is a reasonable option, that they will have somebody there. So if, I don't know if there's an agreed amount of excavation that needs to happen. I'm not an expert on that, so that, I'm naive too, of how far you need to excavate to realize if there is something or not there that's historical. But if they are agreeing to do this and have someone historical there to make sure that the preservation happens of it, is that something that's been discussed with the historical preservation group? Are they on the same page?
Based upon the documents I received today, I don't think they're on the same page. This, they'd like to go, the historic group would like to go a little further, and I know they're in attendance back here, and I'm sure they'll give you their perspective. But I think this is not enough, what they're looking for.
And I ask these questions, I only received the one letter at two o'clock. So the other ones were all in like
A packet, yes.
In support. So that's why I'm asking all these questions.
Yeah, sure.
I mean, to me, I don't know, I'm like, I'll play the naive card. That sounds reasonable to me if they want to find out if there's anything of value historical to preserve it, if the developer is going to pay for that to have on-site. I mean, I would assume someone from the historical preservation would also like to be there.
Right.
To be sure that it's being done in a mindful and correct way. So I'm just curious to know if that's, that might solve part of
Well, I'm pretty sure there's a speaker card for the historic preservation group, where they can give you their perspective here shortly.
Okay. I just wanted to know if, because you met with the neighborhood and some of the groups, if you had heard anything else.
We feel this is sufficient, based upon the report, everything you recommended, approval of the project, be a great project for downtown. And these conditions here, we think are good for the project and fair.
Thank you.
Okay. Going back a little bit on process too, just to follow through with what was discussed. I mean, the other thing that concerns me is the density bonus agreement, which we just received this evening.
Correct.
So we didn't even have it in the packets to review beforehand. So it's something that, you know, could very well be everything correct and everything in line with everything else. But it's something that is critical to this situation because it is the methodology that's being used to achieve a higher level of parking per unit.
Correct.
Today's numbers are one-point-five, and with the bonus agreement, it goes to one-point-eight.
One-point-five. It allows them to build at one-point-five. That's the door to one-point-five.
Okay, well, that's, you know, and typically, we're, you know, I mean, as a whole, typically, we look at one-point-eight, two-point-oh as being the number, and this is one-point-five. This is also, I mean, we understand how, we understand we, you know, we're looking at trying to do a different type of parking strategy in the downtown area.
Yes.
I think we're all in favor of.
Yes.
But it's like, how does this play into this particular project today as we speak?
Well, that's a tool you'd use, yes.
I think these are great points because it is something new that we're bringing to downtown. That could be the footprint of more to come. I mean, you know, it could be our new Santa Monica Pasadena. And so I think, Mark, if I'm hearing you right, you know, we want to be sure that all of our concerns and questions are answered before we
Yeah.
Jump into this.
Yes, for sure. Because this is, I mean, this is one of three projects that are being considered right now for downtown. And the downtown area obviously is very anxious to see something like this happen. And it's a long time coming, but we want to make sure when we do it, we're doing it in the right, putting the right foot in front of the left foot and making it happen. So. Okay.
Thank you.
Any other questions of Vince at this point in time? That's it. Thanks Vince. Ken, you've got ten minutes. Okay. Madam Secretary, have we received anything in, as far as written communication at this point in time?
We have, and those have been distributed and posted on the website.
Okay, thank you. Now it's time we'll open the public hearing. And the applicant, please go ahead and present.
Thank you. Good evening, Chairman, members of the commission. Really appreciate this opportunity to present our project to you. My name is Michael McCann. I'm Regional Director for Toll Brothers Apartment Living. Would like to start with a very brief, well, four-minute video to fully introduce you to the project, and then I'll have a few comments afterwards.
Just out of curiosity for sake of discussion, did we receive any, along with First American Title, an exciting new project for downtown? Yes. Okay, just asking a question.
But there is a PowerPoint that the Preservation Society wants to provide us, their presentation, like six slides.
That's fine. Thank you.
Toll Brothers is pleased to be presenting, along with First American Title, an exciting new project for downtown Santa Ana, the heart of Orange County. Toll Brothers Apartment Living, a division of Toll Brothers, is a leading luxury residential developer and Fortune 500 company with nationwide recognition and an award-winning brand. In fact, Forbes listed us as one of the most admired companies worldwide, five years in a row. First American selected Toll Brothers Apartment Living after a competitive process that included some of the top real estate companies in Southern California. Toll Brothers Apartment Living will be the owner, builder, and manager of the community. Designed to serve the growing needs of the market, the First American Plaza project will bring an activated community to the heart of Santa Ana. The project will imbue the area with residents looking to walk, dine, and shop throughout the day, supporting the local businesses and cementing the area as an exciting destination. The project consists of two parcels. The primary one will include seven floors with a hundred-and-ninety-six residential apartments. Twelve thousand three hundred and fifty square feet of ground-floor retail area fronting Fourth and Main Street. Additionally, although not required by the city's housing opportunity ordinance, the project is offering eleven very low affordable units. In addition, there will be a leasing office, a lobby, residential amenity space, three lofted apartment units that will have ground-floor entrances on Bus Street, three levels of parking, a pool, and other amenity areas. The outdoor area of the site-facing Fourth Street features a public plaza that will include benches, public art, and other community-serving amenities. The second parcel will include four floors of twenty-four apartment units above an amenity area, which is over ground-level parking. Our project design has been crafted to celebrate and reflect the heritage of Santa Ana. Imbued with the organic character of downtown, the project will exude a comforting familiarity for Santa Anans and an authenticity that reigns true for newcomers. The project has been designed to be consistent with the transit zoning code for the downtown area. The architecture has been designed to be sensitive to the existing buildings and neighbors in this downtown core area. In particular, the southwest-facing corner has been designed to reflect the rich history of that corner, as well as complement and take direction from the building located diagonally from the project at the southwest corner of Main and Fourth. The project will replace all sidewalks and trees with landscaping that reflects the best of downtown Santa Ana. This will improve the appearance of the area and improve pedestrian circulation. The First American Plaza will embrace the downtown community with synergy between the project and the public in several areas. A public plaza at Fourth and Bush, retail along Fourth and Main, a deck on Main, a sky deck that overlooks Fourth, and three stoop units along Bus Street. We have heard from the community and learned of two important concerns. First, respect for the history of the original First American headquarters. So we are incorporating a pendant at the top of the Main Street elevation and a plaque at the ground level that reflects the location significance to the history of Santa Ana. Secondly, we need to ensure residents' pets do not soil the downtown area, so we will be incorporating a dog run with an area for pets to relieve themselves. We are excited to be a part of a walkable, transit-oriented community. The project's walk score is ninety-eight, a walker's paradise. Several stops of the now-under-construction OC Streetcar will be nearby the project, including the Sycamore and Fourth stop, which will be one block away. The bus stop adjacent to the project on Main Street will be retained. Local employment within the downtown area and at the city, county, and federal civic center are all within walking distance. And for those that still choose to drive, the First American Plaza structures will provide three-hundred-and-thirty-two total spaces. Two-hundred-and-ninety-four spaces for residents and thirty-eight spaces for visitors to meet any and all parking needs. The tenant parking will provide one parking space per bedroom. In addition, there are City of Santa Ana parking structures on both sides of the site, at Fifth and Main and Fifth and Spurgeon. According to city records, over fifty percent of the stalls in these facilities remain empty between peak usage times of eleven a.m. and two p.m. on weekdays. The revenues generated from any additional usage of these parking structures will be of great economic benefit for the city and local businesses. A parking management plan will be put in place to ensure residents do not park outside the project's parking structure. And OID stickers will be required with contact information for the community's property management to report any vehicles that park outside the structure. In the event tenants require additional spaces, a parking management plan has been prepared by Toll Brothers. Up to seventy spaces may be leased in the adjacent city parking structures, which currently have more than five hundred available stalls. A valet parking program may be utilized as necessary to manage overflow parking needs. The injection of our residents into the area will bolster downtown businesses and will keep Santa Ana the dynamic business and entertainment hub of the region. Fiscal benefits expected from the project include significant additions to the city's general fund, impact fees, school fees, and creating jobs. According to a study performed by the Concord Group, the net new general fund revenue generated by the project over twenty-five years is projected to be approximately sixteen-point-nine million to the city general fund. Impact fees, park fees, school fees, and permit fees are projected to be approximately four million dollars. In addition to city revenue, projected employment creation includes eight-hundred-and-twenty-four temporary jobs and sixty-eight permanent jobs. We are also contributing to the protective bike lane that will run along the frontage of Fifth Street and will contribute to the enhanced traffic calming measures at the Third and Bush intersection. Additionally, we will be installing public bike racks near the plaza area at Fourth and Bush. In addition, we are going to have a public art installation with an expected value of three-hundred-and-thirty-three thousand dollars. Our project will provide a twenty-four-hour presence that enhances the security of the area. The project enjoys widespread support from the Santa Ana business community and local neighborhood groups, the Santa Ana Business Council, Downtown Inc., First American Title Company, and multiple neighborhood groups. We hope you agree and support our project this evening.
Anyway, I think that does a rather good job of introducing the project and want to thank Vince for his presentation. Frankly, stole some of my thunder that I thought I might be speaking to, but did want to raise just a couple additional quick points. Vince spoke to the public outreach we did. We were very thoughtful about ensuring that we met with downtown business leaders, local neighborhood groups, including Lacey, Logan, French, and the downtown neighborhoods. And we did reach out and have two meetings with the historical preservation advocates. We received widespread support, incredibly so actually, from the business community in particular, but also from the neighbors. And I know there's quite a few letters that have been in your package that support the ninety-five million dollar investment that Toll Brothers is bringing to the community to be a part of the community. And as much as anything, replace a building that's been empty for the last five years and severely underutilized for at least ten years prior to that. A few of the issues though that were raised, Lacey community in particular expressed some concerns about affordable housing. And they expressed some concerns about investments into parks within their community. The affordable housing, we've addressed with five percent very low units on-site. I believe this is the first time in several years, if not over five years, that a developer has created an inclusionary housing opportunity, mixed-use community with actual units on-site. That'd be eleven units, equates that five percent. And then as far as the parking, I mean, pardon me, the parks go, we are going to be providing about eight-hundred-and-fifteen thousand dollars in park fees that the city can choose to put into those Lacey community. We did hear from the historical advocates, again, met with them a pair of times. They did express concern for the data that was prepared by the city, feeling that the city's studies were incorrect. And that perhaps underneath all the changes in the facades to the existing building, there might be something there, some sort of facade that deserves to be retained. They believe the design of the building as well does not reflect the downtown historical core, and felt like the entire design perhaps should be changed. The addendum provides a full discussion of the history of the building and the reasons that, for the city's support that this is not a historically significant asset at this time. I do have an attorney here to help speak a little bit more to that, to the extent that you care to ask her some questions about that addendum. And we have the group that did the study itself, that the city directed to do the historical study. Although this structure was built back in nineteen thirty, over the years, it went through significant changes, demolitions, rebuilds, covering of the facade, particularly in nineteen sixty, and then again dramatically in nineteen seventy-six and seventy-seven. And it's been deemed that that rendered, again, this asset is no longer historically significant. Having said that, we met with the historical proponents, trying to find some common ground, find out ways in which we could, I don't know, get some level of meeting of minds. We did offer to create a condition, which is in our conditions of approval, that mandates that during our demolition process, we have a historical architect, preservation specialist out there watching what we do on that corner there at Fifth and Main, and ensure that we document whatever we may find. We've also offered to pull our building, or pardon me, our demo permit at least ninety days prior to when we actually intend to start construction to allow for the time required, that if we do find something of historical significance, there's time for the advocates to see to it that it's salvaged in some way and taken off-site. We've offered to help them with that process. As far as the design of the building not being in line with what the city was looking for, we're adhering to the transit zoning code. We took significant direction from the city staff itself. What you're seeing is not an inexpensive building to build, not our first version at all, but actually beefed up, per the city's instructions, to be a true asset to the community. The addendum also looked at how our project might affect the adjacent historical districts and determined that there would be no adverse effect to the local historical districts. First American is truly a partner on this project. I can't speak for them, but I know they've been strong advocates for nurturing and maintaining the history of their company and their sites. As such, it's their intent to work with us to salvage elements within the building itself, take those off-site, incorporate them into different parts of what they're trying to do, and our intent is to see what we might be able to make a part of our interior amenities as well. With that, I urge your approval of this project. We think it's a great project for the city overall, and particularly the downtown. We're very excited to be a part of it. We've designed it to be a part of that downtown community and are ready to make things happen, starting as early as second quarter of next year. My team is here with me tonight, ready to help answer questions that may come up, eager to help you get comfortable with the project this evening. Thank you.
Does anybody have any questions? Ken, you're done. Have a sit-down. Okay, just for the record, if anybody up here has to leave for a moment, the meeting will be put on hold until we have a quorum back in this. So right now, we have a quorum, and we'll continue to go forward. Any questions of the applicant at this point in time?
Yeah, I have a question for that condition. I don't know if it's a question for staff or for the applicant, but for that condition, that number ten, where it says, so if it is determined that these materials and features warrant further documentation, it says that archival copies of these photographs, that there'll be photographs taken, and that's what would stay as historic? Or is that what says Santa Ana History Room, so they may be archived and available to the public? Is that, so there's no type of trying to preserve any of that? It's just photos or?
Yeah, that's correct. The preservation would be photo-document the site, put them in a history, art history room at the library and keep it there for a view in the future, now and in the future.
So that condition ten is mostly to preserve photos of it, not necessarily any type of materials or anything like that?
As soon as the building would be completely demolished.
Again, we would be providing an opportunity for both First American, who has expressed interest, or people associated with First American has expressed interest in taking what can be found, preserving it, just not preserving it in its exact location on-site. And we offer that to any other historical advocates as well.
But it's my understanding, when we had the discussion, that pertained to items inside of the facility, not the outside of the facility. So you mentioned First American as an example. You said they wanted one of the staircases to go, which is an inside, which is inside the building, which has nothing to do, I mean, has something to do with the historic nature of the building, but the reality of it is, on the historic side of it, it's the outside of the building that the concern exists.
And I think I did express And I think I did express exactly what you said, but there has been discussions with First American about potentially retaining some of the exterior elements, taking them off-site but salvaging those as well.
Is that something that's new since we talked?
I'm not sure if I mentioned it or not. It's been something that's been discussed at length prior and discussions continued to the point of today where we're trying to figure out the best way to achieve a level of consensus that can be satisfactory to others without preventing the project from moving forward as I think most would like to see.
Okay. The other thing that, from my standpoint, one of the things that, I want to go back to the density bonus agreement, and that is, is that, you know, we have a unique situation here because usually what's presented to the commission is that, you know, there's a density bonus agreement that's being asked of the city and the state, so to speak, to cover additional units because of affordable housing. We also look at it from the standpoint, if we were to, we don't have that application at this point in time, is that my understanding, Vince?
We have the application and a draft bonus in front of your agreement.
For the bonus, but that's because the applicant is adding 11 units that are considered to be
Yes, that's a true-
Affordable housing.
Yes.
But they're not obligated to do the 11 units from an affordable housing law or ordinance situation. They could just have 100 and whatever units of regular-
Oh, 220 can be market rate, yes.
Market rate apartments.
Yes.
Having said that, by putting the 11 units in there, they're getting the benefit of the additional parking through the bonus agreement.
The reduction in parking.
Right. So if this was a regular project that had to have, you know, INLU dollars or something like that, how many units would be included in that equation for INLU dollars or units, affordable housing units in this size project?
If it triggered the housing up to the ordinance, 15% of the units?
15%. So we're looking at-
33?
33, 40 units versus 11.
Yeah. 22, yeah, 30, yeah, less than 30.
Okay. I mean, I just think, you know, that's another thing, I mean, hey, I think the one thing that's great about this is the fact that you're putting affordable units into this facility because, I mean, the city's looking at problems when it comes to housing, and the housing issues that we have are that we probably have too many market value apartments and too little affordable unit facilities, and you're kind of bridging that gap, which is, which is good, but I mean, the numbers are just kind of, you know, in my mind, we should have more affordable units inside of this project than we currently have because you are benefiting on the other side with the bonus agreement with getting additional parking or less parking. So that's my concern about that. The other thing is, is that when we spoke the other day, I thought I was under the impression that this was really not very, I saw it both in the presentation and your statement that said this is very low affordable, very low income affordable housing. My understanding when we talked the other day, it was kind of medium.
No, I think that would have just been some form of miscommunication by me or they've always been very low. That's the intent of the communication when we met, and that hasn't changed.
Okay. That was just a concern on my part. Any other questions of the applicant at this point in time? No? Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mike. Okay, so, Michael, you're taken care of as far as a request, so we're done there. First person I have here is Tim Rush. We're set for three minutes?
Before my time starts, I'd like to ask the question, did you not receive communication from Preserve Orange County, French Park, and the Santa Ana Historical Preservation today?
Yes, we did, and those were posted-
And was that distributed to the commissioners?
Yes, they were.
I was concerned because Cynthia indicated she didn't have any of that.
Did I mention I didn't get them until later? Like, I think it was 2:00 o'clock when I started seeing some of the-
Yes, so it was 1:41, our cutoff is 1:00 PM, and I do need time to combine all the documents, edit them, and then distribute.
Okay.
I think the point she was making was the fact that if there was more discussion and concern from a preservation point of view, that was not available to us until late in the afternoon from our perspective.
Okay. Well, let me just back up a moment. As some of you know, I serve as a-
Your three minutes is starting right now, Tim.
What?
Your three minutes is starting right now.
Okay. As some of you know, I am a Historic Resources Commissioner for the city. And Commissioner Marashi, who's here in the audience, Commissioner Schaefer, as well as Chair Alberta Christie and myself, the four of us, and it may have been also Janelle Hardy when she was on the commission, all asked staff numerous times over the last couple year period about what was going on with the First American site. We were repeatedly told, oh, nothing, nothing's going on. Finally, about, I don't know, some few months ago, we were told, yeah, it's an escrow with Toll Brothers, you'll get a, you'll get a presentation on it, but commissioners, you have no purview over that project. Now, that's interesting when you consider that most of the buildings that we've placed on the historic register over the last 15, 20 years, most of them do not exist in registered historic districts. Additionally, the statement by Mike McCann that outreach was made to preservation groups is baloney. A year ago, that's not true. I came and spoke at the, I don't know what it was called, Public Scoping Meeting, which was several months ago, at the train station, and voiced my concerns on behalf of the preservation community. No effort was made by anyone from Toll Brothers to communicate with myself, Preserve Orange County, Santa Ana Historical Preservation Society, et cetera. So I want to set the record straight on that. Additionally, it is interesting to note that yesterday, in the LA Times, there was an article on the lead, on the front page of the business section, talking about the preservation of the 1928 Title Insurance and Trust Building in downtown LA. So obviously, there is some interest in that. Title Insurance and Trust, by the way, was First American's primary competitor back in the day, and First American's building that we're talking about saving was built in 1931. I've reviewed all of the permits that First American took out, and there was a permit, there's no permits for demolition, by the way, that keeps being asserted. Mike uses the term, oh, it's a Frankenstein building. Well, I say baloney to that. This building has been preserved since that skin was put on, not in 1977, but in 1966, because that's a permit that was taken by Allison Honer to do that. And all they did was hang a metal facade on it, they put a broken pediment top and said, bada bing, this is Monticello West. So there you are.
Three minutes, thank you.
Okay. So please continue this, Mr. Chairman and Commissioners.
Okay, thank you. The next is Alan Hess, and Alan is speaking on behalf of Allison Young, Jeff Dickman, and Tim Davidson.
Alan, I need to put your mask on. 12 minutes?
12 minutes.
Good, thank you. Good evening, Commissioners and Chairman. My name is Alan Hess. I am an architect. I have, I'm also a historian. I've written 20 books on California's 20th century architectural history. I also serve as the Commissioner on the State Historic Resources Commission, but tonight I'm here representing Preserve Orange County, the local advocacy group. I have a number of points, and can we get the slideshow up?
Vince?
The slideshow that I have? Because I have a number of photographs which show what this First American building actually looked like and what is still there. As has been said, the building has been wrapped, but that is all. It has not been demolished. Thank you. And here it is as it is today, looking at the corner, what was, what is standing underneath there is this building. A 1931 Art Deco building, very handsome example of the style. And this has been simply wrapped with metal and some brick veneer as well, but if that were to be taken off, this building would, in most probability, still exist largely as we see it in this photograph. Now, we don't know for sure. There's a very good possibility because in the 1950s and 60s, a lot of Victorian and Deco buildings were given this sort of facade treatment, but they are still underneath there. But the Historic Resources Study, which has been presented on this project, has not studied anything about what is existing. It has not been peeled back, there's been no estimate. However, we do have evidence, this is the ceiling of the porch of the building, and we see original detail from the 1931 building. So we know that there is most probably more standing there underneath. Now, this is a good photograph which shows the building there, right in the center, in its historic context. And this is what I think is the most important element of what I want to try to express today. What this photograph shows is Main Street, and it demonstrates the guidelines, the concepts that the city's current general plan policy promotes. It is pedestrian oriented, there are windows on the street, there are a certain consistency of the architecture, scale, et cetera. This is what the general plan, and I've excerpted it here, these elements, for example, that buildings be compatible in scale and consistent with the architectural style and character, that it maintain the unique characteristics of the downtown area, that the policy is to encourage the retention and reuse of historical buildings, that projects must respect the architectural style, scale, context, and rhythm of Santa Ana's historic buildings, et cetera. What we would like to see in this case, well, I would like to also, well, hold it, in the, also the Transit Zoning Code also has similar language as well about what the city has decided the downtown area should be like. Our contention is that the historic building, like this one, this is of course the old City Hall, also in the Art Deco style, also today, an active and beautiful participant in the revival and the interest of downtown Santa Ana. But when we see this, this is what we would propose, and this is what we ask, that this building, historic building, which does exist under a thin facade, it is literally about six inches beyond our fingertips when we touch this building. And it does have windows on the street, it does have the architectural character of old pre-war Santa Ana because it is literally an artifact of that period. This building is there, and what Santa Ana has as an opportunity today is to not just imitate that pre-war character, but to bring it back the way it was through an actual artifact. This is what we would like to see. We do feel that it is valuable, not only to the city, to have this sort of representative of the old pre-war Santa Ana, which the general plan asks for, but also it's a benefit to the developer as well. It brings distinction, a marketability, a different quality to this project that any brand-new project simply cannot provide. There's a texture, the detail, the materials, the scale, the history, as well as the history of the role of the personages who were active in First America and are part of Santa Ana's history. So, to sum up, in this day, we would like to see, first of all, the SEQA EIR addendum address the issues of what is actually there. It does not, the current study has not addressed any of these issues. We'd also like to see adaptive reuse and the energy conservation that restoring, maintaining historic buildings brings to the city represented in this. As I said, it is an opportunity. Santa Ana has an asset in this historic building, which is still standing there. It is something which will give a character, will bring back a character, a distinctiveness to Santa Ana, which no new building could ever provide. And for these reasons, we do ask that the SEQA EIR addendum be studied with a reputable architectural historian and architect to see exactly what can be done to incorporate this historic building into the new proposal. We, of course, do not oppose any new development that brings new people, new life, new economy to the downtown area. We're all for that. But historic buildings bring an aspect, a dimension to this sort of rediscovery that is irreplaceable. So we should not let it be demolished and thrown away, we should incorporate it into the history of Santa Ana going forward into the future. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Alan. Rich Gomez?
Good evening, Chair and Board members. My name is Rich Gomez. I'm the representative with the Southwest Regional Council of Carpenters, and I represent our members that reside and their family members that reside in the city of Santana. We believe that our members will be negatively, negatively impacted by this environmental impact of the project. We oppose the city planning commission approving the project and approving the addendum for this project for a few reasons. One, the adoption of the addendum is inappropriate for this project since the 2010 EIR that the addendum is based off of never analyzed this particular project, rather it had analyzed a larger modification to the city's general plan and zoning code that applies to this project. Two, the residents deserve an adequate opportunity to review and comment upon this project. The city's illegal use of an addendum for this project deprives the residents of this opportunity. In addition, we are concerned that the project set aside a mere 11 units towards very low-income households does not go far enough towards the affordable unit targets set out for this Transit Zoning Code area in the city of Santana Housing. Obviously, there are more questions here, and our residents, our members deserve an opportunity to look into this farther. We oppose the project. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Rich. Kim Tapfer?
Good evening, Mr. Chairman and members of the commission. My name is Kim Tapfer, and I am the owner that is Kitty Corner from the First American Title Site, and I feel like I have a very vested interest in that I office down here and have for the last six years. And I'm often here on the weekends, helping oversee the security of our building and partaking in some of the community activities here. I am also a member of the Santa Ana Business Council. I am not here in that capacity. I'm here as my, the Kitty Corner- Business Council. I am not here in that capacity. I'm here as my, the Kitty Corner neighbor right, right there. I am a big supporter of this project with Toll Brothers, and I want to just bring three reasons for that support to the Commission's attention. The first is that I have been an owner of that property for six years. I am a huge supporter of historic preservation. From my vantage point of looking over that site, there is nothing historic to see, and it is sat empty for six years, which is really a shame. And that is not good for Santa Ana. It's not good for our security. It's not good for our business, and it's not good for the community. Six years, no use for that property. Number two, Toll Brothers has done an excellent job of reaching out to the business community. I have been both at the board meetings with Downtown Inc. and Santa Ana Business Council, and they have gone above board to show us what this project would look like. And I've been a member of the board for the last, you know, year and a half, and they've been attending a lot of the meetings. So I so appreciate their outreach. And based on my opinion, I think the project is very attractive. I think it's well-planned. And as an owner of an historic building, the First National Bank Building, which by the way was built by John Parkinson, which built Union Station, the Coliseum, it's a treasure of the building I own. I find it's highly complimentary, their development to our building and the other historic buildings that are down here. And number three, I'm very concerned that if we put up too many roadblocks for this project for Toll Brothers, they will not be able to economically or feasibly go forward. And I'm afraid that we will be looking at another six years of nothing with this project. And so that would be a real shame. So I would urge the Commission to work with Toll Brothers to try and come up with creative solutions and really allow them to go forward with this project. I think it'll be a huge benefit to the city of Santa Ana, and I love this community and am so thankful to be a part of it. Thank you for your time and your service to our city. Thank you.
Thank you, Kim. Ricky Alder? Alder?
Thank you, Mr. Chair and Commission members. My name is Ricky Alder. I live in Wilshire Square, and I've lived in Santa Ana for 39 years, and I live in a 1929 house that I spent a lot of time preserving. And I think our most important part here is to think about what is underneath the ugly skin that Alison Honer put on in 1960. We have a chance to do things that people do all over Europe, and that is to preserve our history. And that is what we need to do here. We need to take the time. I think that we can probably work together. Not only are we looking at the outside of this building, but inside there are still historic pieces. A photograph is not preserving history. Preserving history is taking the time to look underneath this building and make a good choice. I oppose this and ask you to continue until we have time to really look at what is beneath the ugly. Thank you.
Thank you, Ricky. John Gothold?
Good evening, everyone. Woo, there we go. Good evening, everyone. My name's John Gothold, and just want to clear up the mystery right away. I 100% support this project. I have lived in Santa Ana for 31 years, and I was quite flattered to see that a building that I've owned for about 20 years, the old Santa Ana City Hall building, was part of this presentation already. So that was a nice setup for me. I am also one of the founding board members of Downtown Inc. and the Grand Central Art Center. So I'm kind of a downtown stakeholder here. And I'm very much into adaptive reuse and historic preservation. In fact, when we rehabbed the City Hall building in 2000, I'm very proud to say that we won the best commercial adaptive reuse project for the entire Pacific Rim the year that we did it. So this is something that's really passionate to me. But I got to tell you, there was a huge difference between when we did that City Hall project and the First American project. At best, the cool part of it is a little bitty part of it, what you see in that picture. But this, the building, over time, took up a whole city block, and it isn't cool underneath that. It's ugly. It's one of the ugliest buildings downtown. And maybe, maybe that part of it is still there, maybe not. We don't really know. But I, it's really kind of an, not an equitable comparison to compare the City Hall building and say, yeah, let's do it like that, because you're not starting out with that. I also want to say that we had hoped when we started doing our rehab that we'd find a lot of wonderful art deco treasures inside the building. But my building, you know, went through a lot of unfortunate enhancements in the 70s and 80s, and all of that was removed by the previous owners. It was all gone. First American definitely didn't want an art deco-looking building anymore, which is why they made it look like Mount Vernon. So the chances of it being this cool art deco thing underneath are not great, in my opinion. Design is a funny thing, too. You can't necessarily take an art deco front and put it on modern apartment building and have that really look good. I think that design needs to be what it needs to be. And I don't know that that's going to be a compatible use, even if it was under there, with the proposed use. The other thing I wanted to mention is I'm in the unique position of looking for tenants for my building for the first time in 20 years. And I'm interviewing brokers and potential tenants from outside of the area. And what's getting played back to me is like, yeah, Santa Ana, man, you guys were so on fire. You had so many things going on, but nothing's going on now. And for those of us that are in the trenches, we know that's not true. But the perception is, is that we've kind of stopped. And I think it's time to go. We have a quality project here that I think is going to be a benefit to us all in a matter of time.
Thank you, John.
Thank you.
Ed Marashi?
Hello, Ed Marashi, 2139 North Flower Street. Good evening, Commissioners and City Staff. I am talking on behalf as being a Historic Resource Commissioner, not speaking for the other Commissions or the Commissioners or the Commission itself. I've heard a couple of words tonight, for example, process, as in process, did we have the workshop, did we have the sunshine meeting, et cetera. Also heard the word asset, as in this building is an asset. One of the words I did not hear tonight was respect. And what I'm talking about is that building is an asset, as if the Historic Resource Commission is also an asset to the city. And what I'm talking about process is not once did the Historic Resource Commission be asked about this project. I'm not for or against this project. I'm against the process of not being asked. And respect, I'm asking you guys to postpone this, to have respect for the Historic Resource Commission, so that maybe we have the opportunity to discuss this at our October 3 meeting, which is right around the corner. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Ed. Paul Berry?
I'm Paul Berry. I live in Santa Ana, and I also have a building, I have a office in, in the Spurgeon Building. I've got some notes to talk to you from here, but I wanted to just say one thing. I think that there's been a problem with the, the presentation. So this is a little criticism here of Toll Brothers. Normally, you would see an architect for a project like this appear. And this is Fourth and Main in Santa Ana. This is an important place in all of Cali, Southern California right now. At any rate, this would be a signature project by that architect. And what you would get is a presentation where you'd see the research that that architect did. You'd see some photographs of what it did look like. And so we've kind of missed that personal agenda of, of an expert who's, who shows you the different projects they did around the world and why they were selected as the architect. So I think next time you should bring someone like that, because if that person exists, they, they should be here. I want to applaud the construction that's going on now in the city. It's clean, efficient. We're doing an excellent job with the downtown streets. We've had the climate activism that's going on right now. We haven't said anything about climate so far in this project, kids on the streets. I'm with DR Microgrid, and we're in that office in the Spurgeon Building. DR Microgrid is a new advanced microgrid integrator. And this is about, so I wanted to mention, if we're not familiar with distributed energy and what that means for the future, we need to have some input on that. We need to get up to speed on distributed energy. Also Irvine right now is, has a CCA process underway, and they're using a GPA, which is a joint powers agreement. And we need to see, do we belong in that community choice energy aggregation, or don't we, or when do we, or do we need our own? So the CCA movement is a big thing. And this building is, is, should be considered as a prime candidate for a demand response microgrid, which is something that involves batteries and involves putting energy into the local distributed grid. I want to thank you for your time. I, this, where does this sit into history, the history, and where does it sit going forward, this, this building site? I think the 30s were great. But I think that Santa Ana also has a very strong Mexican character right now, and I think that's vitally important. So I just wanted to mention that. And I, also another thing that's, that people should be talking about is public access to rooftops. Does the public, should the public have a right to a view in a city that's got tall buildings? Kind of interesting concept.
Thank you.
So, thank you. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Paul. Appreciate it.
Good luck, Brian.
Okay, at this point in time, I do not have any other cards. Was, is anyone, or does anyone want to speak on this item at this point in time? Hearing none. Public hearing is closed. You get five minutes. You get, go ahead.
Just a couple of quick things. To the extent that, my God, I'm blanking on it. Tim Rush got confused on my comment about reaching out to historical advocates. I wasn't referring to six months ago. I was referring to when he and Jeff Dickman came to the offices of Toll Brothers on August 21 and discussed the project with Marcus Robinson and myself. And I was referring to the event on September 18 of this year when Marcus, myself, and Pam Sopero visited the home of Jeff Dickman and spoke with him and Tim and some others. So somehow I confused the issue. I apologize. The other item, I'd like to call up Susan Hori, please, an attorney, just to, as part of my five minutes, just to speak to some of the issues related to historical encounter them.
Okay.
Good evening, Chair and members of the Commission. My name is Susan Hori, representing Toll Brothers. And I wanted to, to simply address some of the comments that you heard tonight during the public comment, specifically with respect to, to the building there. As you've heard, it was originally built in the 1930s, but frankly, we don't know what is there. And I think even one of the speakers says, we don't know what is there. What we do know is that it was substantially renovated in the 1960s and the 1970s. And what we also know is that your city and their environmental consultant had an architectural historian prepare a report on the building and evaluated whether or not it was historically significant in the context of the history of Santa Ana. When I looked at the letter this afternoon that we received from the Historic Preservation Society, they identified a number of things, such as whether or not the city had considered the role of the Kennedy family in the city, as well as the role of First American Title. All of these things were actually in the technical studies that supported the city's use of the addendum. So there is plenty of substantial evidence in the record that supports the city's conclusions about this. And the addendum is the appropriate document to tear off of the transit zoning code EIR that was done. At that time, you did a, an analysis of the historic elements of downtown, which should be preserved and what was significant. And your city and their staff and their historic consultant also looked at this building in the context of that. So I did want to just clarify for the record the fact that there was an architectural historian that has conducted a lot of the work there. And underscore the fact that when you do have a, a document like the transit zoning code EIR, when you have a project that is implementing and is consistent with that zoning code, and also is carrying forth all of the, carrying out all of the mitigation measures, including doing a site-specific analysis, there is plenty of evidence in the record that supports the findings of that, as well as the conditions of approval that Toll has agreed to with respect to the controlled demolition, so that if there is something there, it can be documented and provide the public with the opportunity and the, the preservation organizations, the opportunity to salvage or to remove those items and, and to reuse them. I think what's also important for us to realize that that building may not be there, and we just don't know what's there. But what we do know is that we are trying to really re-energize downtown Santa Ana, and that the design you saw, which includes the podium parking, the ground floor retail, and the residential units above that, could not be built with that building. It's not feasible for total preservation. So I think what we've reached here is a really good compromise in terms of making sure that controlled demolition does occur, so that if there is information there that is worthy of documentation, that that information can be obtained. And also, at the same time, carrying out what I think the city wants to see when it adopted the transit zoning code, to really bring new energy, new development to this part of the city. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other comments? Okay. Hearing none. We'll bring it back to the Commission. Are you asking to come up and speak? Please state your name and your address, and also fill out a card before you speak.
My name is Brian Boys, and I work for, my name is Brian Boys, and I work for Lockout Studios. And we have a number of rehearsal studios in the downtown area. And one thing that I don't think anyone's really addressed tonight is the fact that we need more foot traffic. I think most of the small businesses and the businesses in the community around downtown really actually need more, one way or the other, we need more people down, walking around, using the shops, going to eat at the restaurants, going to all the different stuff we have down there. There's a lot of good people that are really trying to make their small business grow. And without the traffic down there, we really don't, you know, it's, it's hard. It's, it's a struggle. So, one way or the other, I like to say that we do need more people and more economy in the downtown area, and this is a way to do it, essentially. So that's all I want to say. Thank you.
Thank you. Before you go back, fill out a card. Okay, at this point in time, since we just had the last speaker, we are closing the public hearing. We'll bring it back to the Commission for discussion. Any comments? Go ahead, Cynthia.
So, I think one thing that hasn't been said tonight is that it's a bad project. I think we all agree this is an exciting time for our city, for growth. The one concern shared, and from what I'm reading from the, the staff report, is that, you know, the Historic Preservation Group has a point, and the developer is willing to, to do something about it. I think that we don't know until we figure out what is there. Perhaps number 10 needs to be rewritten or reworked with the preservation's input. I think, I don't, I really don't know how much more, and, and how many ways it could be said that if the excavation happens, and someone historical, someone who is equipped to say, this is historical, this is something worthy, that, I don't know how else. This is something worthy," that I don't know how else to resolve it because it's not on a historical list now. So, you know, it's 50% yes, 50% no. So, in order to do it correctly and move forward so that we can find out what's there, I think that the developer is on board with number 10 and if willing to just sit down to, you know, really look at 10 and say, listen to the historic preservation and see what the developer's willing to revise. I mean, pictures are nice, but if, let's say the reality is we find some real jewels or treasures there, let's say, what happens next? So that, I think that needs to be talked about between people that know what they're talking about in terms of preservation. So I think that, going back to the table, just to hand out, work with number 10 so that it's concise, inclusive, mindful, I think I had mentioned that before, being mindful of the process so that the community feels they have a voice in the way it's going to move forward and the developer gets to work with them so that it's a collaboration moving forward. So that's what I propose. Perhaps they need, come back in two weeks. It's just number 10 that we're talking about.
Yeah, I agree with Cynthia. I believe, kind of coming back in, in two weeks, I think the responsible thing to do would be to have, you know, the applicant and some of those, like the Historic Resources Commission and also Preserve Orange County kind of included and maybe find out whether it is or whether it's not, we keep talking about. We're not sure, we're not sure. So then, we're going to do, I mean, if it's going to be a demo, we're going to find out. So, let's get going and kind of, that way we have a definite answer, yes it is or no it is not, and we can push forward from there. But I think having those conversations and maybe coming back in two weeks would be a good idea.
Angie?
I'm just kind of on the fence because there were studies already done about this and it was deemed that it's not a historic building. I would love to see those studies because experts already looked at this site. And if there's nothing, we, all we would do is delay a project that we could be discussing at this point. So I'm kind of afraid to do that as well. But I do see why we want to be open to exploring this idea that there might be this building. But also, there were already studies done. I would love to see those if they're available because, I mean, there was already a consensus that it is not a historic building.
I'm just thinking with the studies, is the outside without, not knowing what's under? So I mean, whatever the study is, I'm assuming it has to do with what's already outside, what we can see?
But that's what I'm saying. I would love to see that because, I mean, it's experts already took a look at this. I don't know what they did. We can find more information. It's the city public outside.
Okay. You know, I'll, I'll start off by saying, as the gentleman just got up there and spoke, you know, we do need more foot traffic. We do need more activity downtown and this is obviously a project that could very well present that to us and, and should based on the investment and everything else. Having said that though, I have some concerns, as was just, just said from your legal perspective, controlled demolition. Those two words lead me to the conclusion that the project is going to be demolished. So, you know, controlled demolition, I think we have to look at and understand really what it is that we expect to do. And what I've heard spoken here in certain instances is to go in and possibly peel back some of the facade to understand what we have. I think that, I'd like to see that step in between before we get into a controlled demolition aspect. That's just, you know, the use of the words that I'm, that we, I heard spoken. Because that says that, and I also would like to see the study from the historian that said that this was, you know, not a historic building or not something that needed to be saved. I think the other thing that we've talked about here in some respect is some of the other things Cynthia mentioned, some of the amenities, and I think we brushed over the amenities. I think there's some good things that are coming from the project that we need to look at. I think there's some things that I've heard said and agreed to, but I didn't see them in the presentation. Somebody asked about access to the, to the rooftop outside of the residence there. And I've heard that there was an agreement or something that was done with respect to that, but I didn't see it in the presentation. So, things like that, I think we need to get some clarification on. And I definitely think, I mean, this is a tough project. I mean, we, I can only tell you that we've seen this before and, you know, the historic nature of Santa Ana is different than a lot of cities surrounding here. And I think we have to protect some of those things. I mean, I can remember four or five years ago, this commission went through long discussions over an orange grove on Fairview. And, and that was a housing development that was taking away one of the last orange groves that existed in, in Orange County. And, you know, that particular project went on for a long time. I don't suggest that we go that route. I suggest that we try to resolve this as quickly as possible. And I think what we do is we put some stipulations to staff that we try to get some things done in the next couple of weeks and then move forward with that list and, and possibly maybe what we do is not continue this item till next week, or next meeting, but maybe we have somewhat of a work-study program that we do in the next two weeks to address all the different activities, not to go to vote, but to go to a work-study with a follow-on as to go to vote for this particular item possibly in the last meeting of October. Is that feasible Vince?
From a staff perspective, I believe it is. I'd like to consult with the applicant and just check their timeline.
Well, plus your planner will be back from his vacation too.
No comment, but yes.
Yeah. Any other comments? Okay, so, do we have a motion to continue this project for 30 days? And we'll have a work-study in two weeks?
I have a question.
Just, I'm sorry, let me, let me check with the applicant, see what they're...
Thank you Chairman. Pamela Sopetto speaking on behalf of the applicant. We would prefer continuance so that we can go back and take the direction of working on that condition with the historic preservationists. And rather than leave in limbo, when would be back at a public hearing?
Well, I, I stated that it would be a continuance. I just stated the fact that we would continue it for 30 days and that we would have a work-study in between, which is the next meeting, which I believe is the 14th of October. We'll have a work-study to go through all the different items that we talked about here such as the amenities, such as the, and then, and then the following meeting, we would bring it, bring it back to the Commission based on the work-study.
Okay, I'm just looking to the applicant to see.
That's fine.
So the ultimate outcome is a hearing on the 20th of October? Can I hear a second?
Well, at this point in time, well, at, at this point in time, there's a meeting on the 16th, on the 14th of October and that, and what I'm proposing on the 14th is we do a work-study to cover the items that were not clearly identified in this, in this presentation. Go through the different items, the concerns that the commissioners had with respect to that, and then we would bring it back to the Commission at the following meeting, which at this point in time, I'm being told now that this chamber will be available on the 28th of October.
That is correct.
Adding to that, meanwhile, they would have the opportunity to meet.
Yeah.
So if we're going to come back in 30 days, the plan would be that you all have met, worked on 10, had our work-study, and then we can just move forward.
Okay, so we'd agree to a work-study. We'd appreciate it if you could provide some clarity this evening as to what you're looking to study. I know I've heard several issues that just were, need to prepare and so I'd like to...
Well, I mean, and we'll do that. I think for us to list that at this point in time, that would be prob, I mean, I think you heard four or five. I mean, I'll give you, there is something, there is something to the density bonus agreement that we have to make sure we, we get the chance to go through that. We're looking at the parking, the aspect of parking. I think there was also a discussion about the amenities and what kind of amenities were going to be made available and how those amenities would be handled from, you know, you, you talk about the park on the side where people will be able to come in, use the dog park, people that don't live in the building, things like that. All of those types of things, just to lay that out so we have an understanding of what that is. And there's going to be also the, obviously, the elephant in the room is, you know, how do we look at the, the building itself as it is today and what can we do, if anything, to figure out what's underneath the, the current outside coating?
We would be amenable to a work-study and would appreciate the opportunity to get back here on October 28th.
Okay. So my motion is that we have a continuance on this item number four and that we have a work-study on the 14th, on the 14th of October and on the 28th of October, we bring it back to the Commission for review once again.
A second.
You have a second Felix? Thank you. Any other comment? Okay. Having said that, all those in favor? Aye. Opposed? Four zero. One absent, Ken Nguyen. Motion is to continue this item until the 14th, until the 28th. Okay, thank you. For those that are in the audience at this point in time, if you could move to the lobby, you have, it's our pleasure to let you talk in the lobby, but if you could leave the chambers at this point, we'd appreciate it. At this point in time, does staff have any comments that they'd like to make at this point?
No sir, we do not.
Okay. All right. Angie? Any comments? Felix?
Nope, none.
Cynthia?
Just thank you to staff and for the, any of those reports that you have that can provide us information from the assessment of the building.
If you look in your packet, resolution has the website where you can download and see all the technical appendices and that's where that cultural resources report is.
Okay. All right. Yeah, we don't want to print another tree. Thank you.
Okay. I think the only thing that we'll figure out and how to do, how we're going to do it Vince, is probably to put together the lists of what we would like to talk about and where we would like to have focus at this point in time for moving forward on this.
I'm going to sit down with Sarah and Lisa tomorrow, go through the tape. We have the audio of the tape on your comments, the last 10 minutes, and I could pick out the information. I got yours, Mr. Chairman, I read it, the five things you listed there. Amenities, parking, density bonus agreement. Access, right. Rough access, yeah. I got those written down, so then I'll just get the rest from the other three commissioners at that time.
Right. Okay. And is Ally back in town on the 14th?
Ally's back on the 14th.
This is his first day back?
First day back in town. But she's back in town like in the 10th or 11th. Trust me, I'm going to be sending her along about tonight.
Whoever gave him vacation time ought to be...
Yeah, I am crazy.
Yeah.
Kick me when you walk by me, please.
Don't tempt us. All right, no, so let's, let's put that together and then, you know, somewhere or another, we'll communicate and get this taken care of. I appreciate everybody's time on this. I know it was a little bit of a challenge, but I think it worked out well. With that said, we will adjourn our meeting until October 14th. Thank you everybody and have a good evening.